We'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you. Aye.
What is the graduation to the flag of the United States of America? And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. It's March 15th. All three county commissioners here. I apologize for a couple of minutes late due to technology, but now everyone can hear us out in the county. We will now have consents and approvals. County administrator, good morning.
Morning.
Morning, Renaud.
How's everybody this morning?
Good.
Thank you, swell.
Swell.
Peaky King.
Well, goodness.
All right. We have 10 exonerations for $1,019.54, minutes for March 8th, 2023. Vouchers, general county fund, $69,009.1106. Magistrate court, $55.93, 911, $10,897.39. Chestnut Ridge Park, $8,726.17. Camp Muffley, $1,059.17. Mason Dixon Park, $2,089.317. Mon County Center, $13,009.0178. Transportation levy, $253,673.67. Recreation levy, $825.96. Library levy, $62,264.43. Reallocated coal, $448.37. Assessor's valuation, $657.82. Dave Report Center cash, $1 million. That can't be right. That's not Dave Report Center payroll. Payroll account, $1,771,209.90. Morgantown Industrial Tiff, $16,272.50. ARPA, $24,850. Parks and Recreation, $16,594.28. Purchasing card vouchers, general county, $15,173.84. 911, $179.35. Chestnut Ridge Park, $238.76. Camp Muffley, $397.93. Mason Dixon Park, $184.30. Assessor's valuation, $3,269. For a voucher total of $2,274,224.78. We have budget revisions. We require state approval for general fund, for state grants, law enforcement, jail reimbursable, central garage, other health, and community centers. Position vacancies for board and authorities are listed on our website. Fiduciary orders from March 15th, 2023.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
Proffing moving second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. No.
Yeah, you also have recommendation from fiduciary commissioner George Armstead for an objection to interim accounting in the estate of Robert A. McNeil, Sr.
On this, the recommendation from the fiduciary commissioner was to remove the executor from his position. However, we don't have a formal application from the successor executor or someone that wishes to be the successor administrator or executor to take that action. So I'd make a motion that we give the other beneficiary 30 days to make the formal application to remove the current administrator from his position. And then at that point, we can take an action on the fiduciary commissioner's recommendation to remove the existing administrator.
I would second that recommendation and ask that the state office notify the fiduciary commissioner and all parties involved so that they understand that there's a deadline.
Proffing moving second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That's the first one.
There's also recommendation from fiduciary commissioner Matthew Gata for an objection in claims in the estate of David D. Harshberger.
Based on fiduciary commissioner Gata's recommendation, I would recommend that we accept his recommendation to deny the claim for posthumous rent as was claimed by the claimant in the estate.
Second.
Proffing moving second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we deny the rent support. I will ask Mr. Harshberger, since you are here and we did it last week, is there anything you want to say or it's because you did come so up?
Thank you, commissioners. I just had a couple of points. I think there's still an outstanding item on the wear and tear of the apartment with paint and carpet. And I just wanted to say that my three points, my father lived there for 12 years from the age of 70 to 82 when he passed, and I would suggest that that is normal wear and tear after that period of time. He had paid a $2,200 security deposit that we asked the landlord to keep in lieu of that. And as his executor, I have spent more than was in probate to fulfill the wishes of his will. And so I would just state that.
That's part of the record and we will, I'm sure that's the fiduciary will know that. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for coming again this week.
Absolutely.
Okay, we have no other fiduciaries, so we can move on. Introduction of new employees, youth services center.
They have interviewed Lamika Johnson as a part-time registered nurse for the center. Yearly rate is $13,600. It is an on-call basis employment of employment, and she is not eligible for benefits. Her first day of employment would be March 22nd.
Move to approve the personnel as presented.
Second.
Proffing moving second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Also Brittany Scott, also a nurse, is also going to be on a part-time on-call basis, not eligible for benefits. She is also employed for $13,600 as a yearly rate. Her first day of employment would be March 16th, 2023.
Move to approve the personnel as presented.
Second.
Proffing moving second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chestnut Ridge Park.
I received a letter from the superintendent. Tessa Renee Campbell will be employed as a part-time seasonal without benefits. Start date is March 20th. Pay rate will be $11 an hour.
Move to approve the personnel as presented.
Second.
Proffing moving second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Camp Muffley?
Yeah, sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Brock Hunter Darnell, he is going to be a part-time seasonal maintenance without benefits. Pay rate is $12 an hour. His start date is Thursday, March 16th.
Move to approve their position as presented.
Second.
Proffing moving second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any others?
No, thank you.
Okay. At this time, we will have comments from the public. Please state your name, address, and you'll have three to four minutes to explain why you're in front of us. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Tamara Klein. I live at 139 Hawkins Run, Core, Maidsville. It's really Higgins. And I brought a packet that I left on at your seats because I think pictures will help us understand better. Higgins, real small community in southern, kind of southern Montegalia County. I indicated on the map, the first map, that we're not really Morgantown and, well, we're not Morgantown and we're not really the western end because there's a huge mountain and a long stretch of driveway between us and the western end. The area is very wooded, sparsely populated, a lot of farms, and not one of the richer communities in the area, but a great community to live in. And so we've worked on, not we, somebody else worked with Comcast and got high-speed internet within our reach for businesses. 500 megs download with no caps for $180 a month, which to Morgantown people sound like a lot. But to me, where I've been paying ViaSat $280 a month so that my husband and I can telework, and another $80 to HughesNet so we can have a little bit of internet for our home, and then we don't have cell service, so I had to pull a landline in. And we got the cheapest landline. We can't make any long-distance phone calls, and it's another 40 bucks a month. So I found out about this. We were outside, and we have a guy that drives us around on his little four-wheeler thing, and he kind of keeps us, it's like the town crier, and I mean that in a good way. He was driving up the road, and he stopped to let us know that Comcast was coming this way. And I'm like, no way. And he told me, and I'm like, no. And I bet him 20 bucks, okay? So I don't think this is going to happen, but these people have worked so hard and they're so close that I wanted to do my part and contribute what I could. They have, right now, one of our options is Starlink, satellite internet, but they've had my $100 for two years, over two years, waiting to get that service. I was able to buy the satellite for $700, and I get what they call best effort for $150 a month. That means what's not being used, we get that. Sometimes it's down to five megs. In the morning, it's 60 or 80 megs. But that's, so that works out great for our telework. So the second page is the map. The pink outlines what area this covers. I've also attached two letters, three letters, from people, and one of them goes into real detail about how Comcast told us if we got 11 businesses signed on that they would do this and we'd have to pay, the 11 businesses would pay $1,300, and then all the residents could be added and signed on. They would benefit from it too. We get 11 businesses. We send it in, and Comcast says, oh, no, wait, you need 14. You need 14 businesses or you need $12,000. And we're searching to see if there's any more, you know, because we are sparsely related or we're sparsely populated, and so some, there may be that going on and we don't know. So we're trying to locate that. We don't have people that could pay, I mean, I could pay a grand to get it to happen for me, but I can't pay 12 grand to get it to happen for everybody. And our kids went during COVID, they had to go somewhere and sit in the parking lot and do their schoolwork or find out their assignments. And this is a community that isn't, doesn't have, I love them, but not a high scholarly rate. They need easy access to information. They need to have a little playing field with all the people that have good internet. Our high schoolers spend an hour and 15 minutes on the bus one way. So that's two and a half hours a day on the school bus. The, we, sorry, I lost my train of thought. So I did the math, and this 12K will get us another 20,000 feet of internet. It will open it up. It'll bring it closer to other people for more little bit projects like this that we'll add on. I know there's the opportunity for maybe some grants, but we don't have time for that. Comcast gave us a deadline of last Friday where they were going to pull the funding. So we don't know what the, then they came back and said 12K or 3,000 more, or three more businesses. So we don't know what the deadline is. They have resources that they have people waiting for. We're fortunate enough at this point to be so close. Like I said, I bet 20 bucks it wasn't going to happen. So the next, the next map with the little pretty colors.
Just for clarification, the reason why I'm giving you more time is I received a letter from Scott and Kitty Hendricks who wanted to be here and speak. I have this, so I'm going to give them your time because they could not be here because they were working. So that is why you're getting more time, just for clarification.
I would ramble, sorry. So the next, the colored picture, there's, it looks like where we're located, we're supposed to have cable internet, we're supposed to have Comcast anyway. According, this is from the study.
Right.
So I think this is along with what you have planned. And then the final page is a layout. It is a picture, graphical picture, showing how sparsely wooded we are, all the mountains, all the trees, why a cell, cell signals don't work. My friend here, she lives on top of the mountain, so she has cell service. I live on the valley. We haven't, US Cellular wouldn't even ship me new phones. We'd have to pick it up by the store, at the store because we don't live in cell area.
Right.
So this is just a good representation of what you can see. And then I've noted here, the project affects 42 homes, 115 people, 29 school kids, and 13 teleworkers. With the popularity of remote work, we could be bringing jobs into our community. And I saw that Mon County is very entrepreneurial with home-based businesses. So this is another thing that could be an economic boost to a not real rich area. And finally, just a point, that everybody thinks, Mon County, y'all got good internet? Well, I was on a teleconference with McKinley, and I came up to ask, asked the question, I said, Mon County. And he said, oh, you're from Mon County. You've got great internet. I'm like, no. So, you know, they don't know about us. They think because we're close to Morgantown that we're covered. So that's it. I appreciate your time. And one other thing that I meant to start with, I appreciate all the, appreciate all the work at Mylan Park and that pool. My husband and I are able to use it, and what a great facility.
Thank you. Thank you. We're not able to respond, but if you stay around during our individual discussions, we will probably make some comments. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Mindy Thorne. I am a resident at 670 Hawkins Run Road in Maidsville, Core, depending on what you determine it to be. I come to you today as a resident of Hawkins Run Road, Core, Maidsville area. This once small community has grown exponentially as the generations who first started out have expanded and many others have settled in. Our family ties go back 50-plus years in our area, with my children being the fifth generation to live on our property. I am coming to you today on behalf of our community members to request assistance in helping my family as well as many others in our area continue and to thrive and succeed. With technology ever advancing, access to reliable internet is as dire as access to electric and water for most people. Our neighbors have come together to work with Xfinity or Comcast on the expansion for service. While we are happy to put in the legwork to advocate amongst our community members to draw on the required number of customer signups to meet Xfinity's needs, we have hit a roadblock that requires more assistance than our community can provide. We're here today asking the commission to invest in our community as many others have in our county over the past several years. We are asking for a payment of $12,000 to be made directly to Comcast in order to cover the expansion costs to provide our families and our community with the services necessary. There are a large number of business owners, adults who work from home, individuals participating in higher education, and school-aged children in our community that need access to this non-satellite reliable internet. Ensuring the project's completion will allow our community members to thrive in both their home and business life, ensuring continued commitment to our county and community's population, financial advancement, and output for years to come. It is dire that we keep our community growing for the foreseeable future in order to give our children and the generations to come the best opportunity towards advancement while remaining in our county. You may be shocked at the number of small businesses that our small little community can hold, but we are all here ready and waiting for this opportunity to advance with more growth. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I know that you have a previous presentation on this and other letters, so if there are any gaps that you would like to be filled in, please let me know, and I'm happy to answer them for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good morning. My name is Jason Charles. I'm known by no other name. I do not have an address to provide for you, for it was taken away from me when I was unlawfully incarcerated. Therefore, to him that knoweth to do good and doeth it not, to him it is sin. If religious freedom exists in this land, it is for a man to do just that peacefully refrain from sin. One cannot be forced to comply with something he knows to be a lie, that that may lead him down a road set for destruction. Whether or not one is innocent or guilty, once in the pit called North Central Regional Jail, one is their property. Without ever being able to speak on my own behalf, I was always forced to comply with ungodly men, never willing to answer the question of what kingdom they serve. Monk ridiculed, lied to, and denied every request, trying to have my day in court to prove what I know to be true. I suffered great material loss. Yet I know better, for we are to store up our treasures in heaven. The only hope I have is that one day, truth will prevail over the lies leading so many astray in this land. Righteousness is bestowed upon you. It is not of your own accord. One walks in righteousness of truth, and they are seen as wearing the robe of righteousness through obedience to the truth, producing good works. One is not righteous apart from the truth. There are none good, no, not one. Apart from the truth, you will fail. This path leading to destruction riddled with lies is not the will of God. He encourages us to go contrary to the lie. All throughout the scriptures, he gives guidance to walk the straight and narrow. I will never forsake you. Be strong and take heart, all you who hope in the Lord. I have told you these things, in me you may have peace; in the world you will have trouble. But take heart, I have overcome the world. This encouragement is not to brighten your day, it is the acknowledgement of hope in your call to perfection, as the apostle Paul said, "Although I have not yet achieved, I strive forward." For if we fall, we have an advocate in Jesus Christ. We are not to live in the failures, following lies or liars, nor those who follow lies, nor supporting liars. Maybe back in the day, everyone knew each other. The sheriff knew the good guys from the bad apples. Possibly the good guys were given liberty as the hammer came down on the bad apples. As the population grew, the moral morality of the land sank. Peripheral treatment could not be given because the good guys were hard to find, and the bad apples cried foul. I get it. Today, only the big donors and fellow state masters get the nice guy treatment from the sheriff. And the bad apples have become such a problem that no one seen, can seem to fix it. I say, let's try and fix what caused the problem, growing. And I do not suggest a population decline, but a moral incline. Give peace with God a chance. I know his promise is true. I know his word is more precious than gold. This land will receive the blessing of, if, will receive the blessing if God's people turn from their wicked ways, or a storm will come upon and destroy this land, for its foundation is a lie. Please, I beg you, to seek remedy in the truth. Go forth in righteousness, knowing that your call to perfection is an onward course only achievable step by step, faithful step by step, in the truth.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Yes, I'm Ron Justice. I live at 741 Johnson Avenue. And just, I'm not really sure who I represent today, but I wanted to come and bring to your all's attention an event that we've put together and requested some funding through the county ballpark fund. It is called the, well, we don't exactly know what it's called. We worked with the high schools and the Mylan Park and also some outside groups. And the goal was to look at the different things that we could do to enhance and bring folks into town. So you all could be familiar with the McDonald's Classic that they play in Bridgeport every year, which is a great event. And what we're seeing is, instead of high school teams throughout the state of West Virginia traveling to southern areas to play, that they prefer these weekend-type events. So we said, well, we, because all of our Mon County teams go to Bridgeport and play in that, and we'll continue to do so, and it's a great event, but let's put something together up here that wouldn't be competitive, but allow those teams to come in. And the initial goal was to put both baseball and softball together on the same weekend. We couldn't achieve that this year because some of the softball folks next week, I think is, are coming up in early April, is the spring break, and that had already occurred and scheduling had occurred. So, but the goal is to do that. The other tricky thing that we have here, obviously with the ballpark, which is the key, so whatever one wants to go and see and play on, you have to do it on off weekends, schedule around Easter. So our initial goal, because we work very close with Don Robinson, what they're doing. So, but this year was a little wonky because the way the schedule's set up and with Easter falling in, Don's only weekend, and he, again, works with us, was the last weekend, which is Ovax, which wouldn't let, allow our local teams, they're going to play on Friday night, but hopefully one of them would be playing in championship on Saturday. So we put this together. Future years, we'll work together to, we want to bring it all together on one weekend, but it's all contingent around the scheduling of the baseball. But I just wanted to come to your all's attention. CVB's been great. They've reached out. I think we've got nine teams coming in from out of town, and they've helped secure hotels and all those things. But you'll hear, yeah, I say we don't even have a real name. We're calling it the Montegalia County Classic right now, but I just wanted to come and bring that to your all's attention, and we put the request in.
Do you have a date scheduled?
April, the first weekend of April. I'm sorry, I shouldn't put that on there.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Before I close, since I did receive a letter from Scott and Kitty Hendricks, and it is part of Mrs. Klein's packet, but I did promise them they were going to come and they couldn't make it. I just want to read a couple of the sentences from Mr. Hendricks, who I've been working with out of the Higgins area. Says, "Our local community, Higgins, has never had access to high-speed internet or cable. People have been working with Trent Porter to extend services to the rest of Higgins community beyond the current Comcast endpoint. At one time, it was agreed upon, $1,327. However, after a lot of community outreach, 11 businesses in our local area were identified and agreed to the Comcast conditions. Unfortunately, Comcast is now claiming that their finance department made a mistake, and they need an additional $12,000, which is what you're requesting. We would appreciate if the county commission would give consideration to alternatives beyond the existing project to form ring to help residents and businesses in the western part of the county." And again, I appreciate, Ms. Klein, you gave a lot of the question, answered a number of the questions that I was going to ask, but you did give a report, and I just wanted that as part of the record because I did give that my word. And we will discuss that at the end under commissioners' reports. With that, I will close the public portion. Now we will have grants. Ms. Colleen Coon, come on down.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have requests for reimbursement. The first one is for the SAFE grant, and the amount is $6,978.86. The next one is the Governor's Highway Safety Program, Safe Communities, and the amount of $4,032.60. And finally, impaired driving, and the amount of $3,120.24.
Move to approve the president signing the grant documents as presented.
Second.
Proffing moving second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have correspondence and a number of congressionally-directed spending letters. I'm not going to read them all unless you wanted to.
Well, I mean, that should be mentioned.
It's just, it's public. It just, yeah.
So we got the West Virginia Land Trust, West Virginia Department of Transportation for both the I-79, exit 155, and the Harmony Grove Interchange, West Virginia Women Works, West Virginia Sober Living, West Virginia Bureau of Senior Services, West Virginia Division West Virginia Sober Living, West Virginia Bureau of Senior Services, West Virginia Division of Natural Resources, and Hope Hill Sobering Center. On Monday, I also received a request from the legal counsel in the city of Westover asking for a letter of support for their, the sewer, sewer and storm yard project. So we got that to them and sent it in. That is all four letters of support.
And you had a number of agenda items, or items that weren't on the agenda?
Yes.
Their correspondence?
Yes. So we got two follow-up emails from the Mary Beth Marstiller and the Amy Hegadorne that Mayfield Road from last week. There was two follow-up emails after they watched your meeting last week. And then two additional ones, Erica Parenti and Julie Phillips, both from Mayfield Road.
Okay, any other correspondence? Okay, thank you. We'll go to through unfinished business to new business. Consideration of requisition number 75 for the University of Town Center Economic Opportunity and Development District subaccount.
Requisition is for $839,989.05.
And that amount is less the $100,000 statutory lien and tax administration fund. Move that we approve requisition 75 as presented.
Second. Prop move in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. And that amount is still trending about 16% over last year's collections, so it's not as good as previous months, but it's still, still trending in the right direction.
We're out of the holidays, too.
Yes. Consideration of previous requests by Mon County Victim Assistance Program for use of the Courthouse Square National Crime Victims Rights Week 2023, April 26, 2023.
Move to approve the request as presented.
Second.
Prop moves in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, do we have any other new business? Okay, moving quickly along, this is great. Reports from elected officials and department supervisors. Anybody here planning to speak? Seeing none, we will go, Sean first reported the county commissioners.
Since our last meeting, last Thursday, I had Red Team and Development Authority. On Friday, we had staff reports and we started our budget report, our budget hearings. This week, on Tuesday, we had our Joint Use Management Agreement Committee meeting. They reported on everything that's going on at the track facility and the aquatic facility. And again, we're heading into spring, it's going to be a busy spring. It's been a busy past week. And there's also some other good news in regards to events that are coming to the Aquatic Center. So I'll fill you guys in on that in our staff reports. Today's a regular day, we have budget hearings all day long, and at the end of the day is Moreton Area Partnership Board meeting, along with the Business After Hours. I believe it's at the Elks this, this month. Tomorrow, we have a, I have a call with the administrator and Russ Rogerson from MAP and members of MUB to talk about our ongoing project, to get an update. And we have an MMPO meeting tomorrow night?
Yes, I think MM is the 16th.
Okay, yeah, I had it on the calendar, but I didn't. Usually, we start seeing emails flying around about two weeks before that meeting, and I haven't seen any, so.
I know.
Hopefully, it's probably going to be a boring meeting. So we have an MMPO meeting, all the commissioners and, and the other representatives, Mr. Harshberger, of course, will be there, too. Friday, we have staff reports and budget hearings. Not going to report on anything in general. I do appreciate your residents that have come in and brought this information to us. It's been amazing in the past three years with all that we've been doing in regards to trying to connect Mon County. We haven't had a lot of input, surprisingly, hadn't had a lot of input, certainly haven't had it from the ISPs. They really kind of, it's almost like we're in competition with them, which is, which is good. If it gets you served, that's great, because we're not, the county's not there to go into the cable business. We're trying to provide infrastructure so that, so that the ISPs can take it to the final route to your house. So we are out there trying, but it's good to hear, it's good to hear suggestions like this, and I'm certainly, the commissioners and I will talk about it, and also talk about it with my, with our broadband team. And we will, we will give you some sort of feedback, or we'll have conversations with, directly with Comcast to see how, how, but we appreciate you doing the legwork. It's, it's informed citizens like you that are really going to help connect this area, or connect this county. And I apologize for the, oh, you guys got good service there in Mon County. That's kind of one of the, one of the problems with the way things are driven down from the federal level, is they make grants available and they think that solves everything, but it's, it's, it's a lot of work to, to actually do what we're trying to do at the ground level. So we, and it doesn't help when people are telling us we're served and we're not. We get that, I mean, you get it on the western end, that's the first time someone told me that the western end was served. But on the western end, you don't have any, you don't have any connectivity, and we know you're not served. That's why we started the, our first Ring 11 on, on that side of the county to, to start, start with you guys. But on the eastern end, they're told that they're served, and they're not also. But they're told they're served, you have service, and everybody tells them that, and they're like, no, we don't. So we certainly appreciate your input, and we will, we will take a close look at what you've provided. I applaud your efforts to band together. Commission's always interested in, in working with people that are also, want to be part of the solution. So thank you, I appreciate both of you coming in and providing this information, and we'll certainly talk about it. Ron, just to be clear, your event is also in conjunction with the, the, Don Robinson from MBB, their Mon County Classic, so, and I believe that Don is scheduled in, in March to come in, sometime in March, to come in and talk to us? I had you put it on the agenda. It's on the agenda for one of these, one of these days.
It's the last weekend.
Of, of April? Now, you said the first weekend of April, but April 1 is Saturday, you're talking about this.
It'd be March 31st of April.
Oh, okay, so it is the first, okay. I just wanted to make sure which, which weekend it was. But we'll certainly take a look at your application, as we will with Don's. And for the residents that don't know, this is a fund that we've made available, it's rent payments that West Virginia University pays for the Mon County Ballpark, and we put those funds aside to support events that are held at that ballpark, community events, because that is our ballpark, it's the community's ballpark. So we're, we're always happy to see people utilizing those funds and bringing events to the, to the venue. And I know Granville does a lot of that, and we appreciate those events. Again, just driving people to that area of the county, taking these resources that we have. I appreciate your comments about the Aquatic Center. I sit on the JUMO, Mr. Justice is the president of Mylan Park Foundation, which is part of the, of the JUMO. It's a, it's a committee made up of representatives from WU and Mylan Park Foundation, or I'm sorry, Mylan Park Properties, to, to run the facility. And we're always, we're always interested in input in ways that we can continue bettering that, that facility, and it's something we're focused on, making that, it's a community asset, we want it utilized more and more of a regional asset, and it's becoming that. So thank you for your comments. That's all I have.
Just to reiterate, what Sean said, we thank you all for coming in. I don't know, you'll find another commission in the state is committed to getting service to our citizens as we are. I can't even count the number of hours Sean has put in. I doubt he can either, he might, he might just be very depressed after he does, but we're, we're working hard to do that. It certainly seems like a, a not out-of-bounds request, so we'll address it and get back to you, as Sean said. And, and also with the ballpark request, certainly that's something that, that's what the fund's for, so we appreciate you bringing it to our attention, and we'll, we'll look at it as well. And that's all I've got, Sean, pretty much covered everything.
A couple things. One, Mayfield Road, I know we've been receiving a number of requests. I can say publicly that I've contacted the DOH, and they are coming in to have a work session with us, and we're, I'm going to ask the commissioners to come up with a list of different projects, just updates and also for future. I do want it very clear, and I've been in touch with the people out at the Mayfield Road, that I'm going to ask the commissioners to suspend the rules to allow one individual to speak, to do a presentation for three minutes. Again, it's not a public forum, it's just our work session, and they will be able to explain the concerns they have out at Mayfield Drive. Second, I've been attending the Build for Zero for homeless, and both the city and the county have been really involved in that, and today, of course, on the front page, the warming shelter is closing. I know I can speak for the county commissioners, that we have been very intent in trying to come up with solutions and to help this situation, and we've been working closely, and Daniel Trumbull from the city of Morgantown has been working with us. I think the big problem we are having is that there's no agency or group that's willing to step up to run the program, and that's the problem. And I will continually say that we, the city and the county, are not a social service agencies. We're here to help solve the problems and possibly fund some of them, but we need someone to step up to do that, and I want that really clear. And finally, out at Hagan, first, I appreciate your coming. The last several weeks, I've been in touch with Scott Hendricks, who made us aware of the situation. I have tried, just so you know, for 48 hours to get ahold of the individual from Comcast, Mr. Trent Porter, and I've been unable successfully to do that, so I've asked Mr. Hendricks to reach out. One of the things, when we discussed this issue, that was brought up, was we would like to see actually in writing. Comcast is very good at offering, but we want to actually see it in writing, so we don't see 12,000, and then it's another 12,000.
We named that the park.
And we promised you, when the three of us say, we're not going to be like Starlink and get back to you in two years, we will be immediately doing this. But I wanted Sean to really know what was going on, and that's why I immediately sent it to Sean, because he also is our representative on the broadband group. So if we can come up with ideas, and I think this is great, you're the first group that has gone out to try and do something and come to us, and as Sean said, we were expecting more of this. And if this is what your area is interested in, and we can make sure that the capacity is what it's going to be, and it's in a contract, I know it's really favorable, and 12,000 is not a lot of money if it does what it's supposed to do. And I love your idea that now we could possibly bring more businesses and locations out there. So again, I want to thank you. I think the three of us are very excited that, this is a whole new area that we never even thought of, that may have come out of the program, but if we're able to move forward on this and it works, maybe this will entice other groups to come out and work as a community. So we really want to thank you, and I do really appreciate that.
We thought of it. We just thought it was going to be the ISPs bringing us these suggestions.
Yeah, we, right.
And three years in, and it's residents that have brought us a suggestion and a proposal.
You, go ahead, I saw you raise your hand, go ahead.
I've been doing a lot, I've been speaking with Trent directly, quite often.
Oh, good.
Do you want me, I'm going to call him, I told him I'd call him when I leave here.
I will give you my number.
Okay.
Yeah, because I've told him, yeah.
Give him mine.
Okay, well, actually, yeah, we'll give you quietly, I don't want to publicly.
Yeah, that's fine.
But no, I'll give you Sean, because Sean's the key in working, because he will have the right questions to ask, but he hasn't been, yeah, probably he's being inundated, and that's why he isn't getting, taking the phone calls, and that's fine, but I do really appreciate it. The other final thing I just want to add is, Pantry Plus More was accredited again by Mountaineer Food Bank, and they've come up with some ideas and suggestions that we can look to expand our program for the community. I'm very excited about that. We went through the two-hour accreditation, and anyone who knows, when you go through accreditation, you never know what's going to happen. So we're very excited about that. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move, second.
We be gone.